Sarah will be coming in here soon with her siblings.
Where is she at?
Not yet.
She's a tiny kid.
Dude. She's over six feet. She came in the house. I'd like to call the March 25th, 2019, meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the Town of Matthews to order. We'll start out with a safety minute if we need to evacuate the building. We have doors out in the lobby to the right which take you down the stairs to the front of the building, and there's also a stairwell to the left as you go down the hallway that will take you to the back of the building. If you have any articles with you, you need to put those under your chair or push them under the chair in front of you so that if we do have to evacuate that no one trips. There's also a defibrillator out to the right side of the reception desk if we need that. We have plenty of police officers here, at least for the first part of the meeting, and it has self-instructions with it, so you can open it up and use it. With that, I'll call on Commissioner Query for our invocation and also some reminiscing about one of our former town managers. Mr. Query?
Yes. I'd like for everyone this week or in the weeks coming to keep in mind the Jordan family. Juanita Jordan, who was a town employee and was the town clerk and town manager for a short period of time over the years, approximately thirty years, passed away this last week at ninety-five. But we also have in our town here, a room in here that's dedicated to her, the Juanita Jordan Meeting Room. And if you would, just keep the family in your prayers this week, and I'd like to ask Mr. Buckle if he will say the invocation.
Thank you, Mr. Query. Let us pray. God of all, as we gather this evening, we ask that you give and grant to this board the courage and the wisdom to make the just and right decisions, these decisions for your people, the people of Matthews. We ask that you put your comforting and loving arms around our police department, our fire department, and our EMTs as they go about protecting the community twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, keeping them from harm's way. We ask, Lord, that you put your arms around the family of Juanita Jordan, who did pass away. Give them your care, your comfort, and your loving guidance as they go through these next months grieving her passing. These things we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I did want to take a moment to recognize five ladies, six now, six ladies who are here from Butler High School, working on a civics project. Welcome to the town council meeting, and certainly if you have any questions after the meeting, feel free to talk to commissioners or myself about questions you have. And I see, I think we've got a mom and a dad here too, helping out, so thank you for your efforts as well. Turn to the manager to see if there's any items to be added to the agenda.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. We would like to recommend adding an item for Charlie's Carnival. There's a breakdown in communication, and they in fact do want to have an event in the park this Saturday, and add that as eleven E.
Okay. Do we have a motion to add that item to Section 11, new business, as item number E?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Anything else, Mr. Blodgett?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. The next thing we have is introduction of our new police department, K-9, and some of you may have seen him as you came in. But he's having a great time with his tennis ball or whatever kind of ball, and he's got a badge on it. I didn't see the badge. So Chief Pennington.
Mr. Mayor, Board, residents of Matthews, my name is Chief Pennington. Tonight, you will see on the consent agenda later on this evening, the retiring of one of our police K-9, Police K-9 Castor, who is a ten-year-old Belgian Malinois. He started service on October 31st of 2011. After tonight's meeting, he will be officially retired, should that go through with the consent agenda, obviously. And then his replacement is a fifteen-month-old black Labrador Retriever, still has a lot of puppy in him, as you can tell. His name is Benny. Benny is a single-purpose K-9, which means he's going to be trained in narcotics detection, not patrol apprehension, as some of our other dogs have been in the past. He's going to be trained in marijuana detection, heroin, cocaine, and methamphetamines. Actually, if I can rephrase that, he is trained. He is technically certified as of last Wednesday. He started his rookie year just last Thursday and already has two arrests under his belt. So he's off and running, which is good for the town. I do want to introduce, if I could, Officer Osich. Officer Osich is a nineteen-year veteran with the police department. He has been a K-9 handler for fifteen years. This Benny will be his fifth K-9 that he's worked for the Town of Matthews. So that's a very long and illustrious career so far, so we appreciate his work. Benny is certified by the United Police Work Dog Association, UPWADA, which is a very prestigious organization here, and Officer Osich is a master trainer with them, so. Any questions, comments?
Any questions for Chief? Have fun with him.
Thank you, guys.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is public comment, and we didn't have anybody sign up this evening for that. So we'll move on to reports from the advisory boards and committees. And the first item is the Veterans Advisory Committee, and I'll call on our chairman, Tom Cannon, to provide that report.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for the opportunity to update you on what your Veterans Advisory Committee for the Town of Matthews is doing. And, ah, there we go. As you know, we meet on the first Wednesday of the month at seven in the Jordan Room. Some of our recent accomplishments, ending up last year, we will continue to update ongoing three-month rolling calendar events of interest to veterans on the town website. We had recommended a Veteran of the Year program and nominee candidate last year. The mayor accepted their candidate and awarded him the Mayor's Medal in December. Research on that for 2019 is underway now. We have one of our members who is leading that effort and has been reaching out to the Town of Matthews and also to several other organizations, looking for candidates. So we're trying to get into that early. For several years, the Veterans Advisory Committee led the Memorial Day Weekend Event, the war exhibit that was done here in Hood. It's a large event, and we recommended to the town that the American Legion Post 235 lead that with the advisory committee in an advisory role to them. And so that's what we're into now. So we'll be part of that, but it will be post 235 who will do that. Upcoming events, we recommended to the town that they support a veteran and sponsor for the Queen City Honor Flight for May of this year. That individual has been named, and we have funded that cost, so the individual and its sponsor will be leaving on May 11th for their honor flight. We're purchasing two wooden display cases for veteran information. One will replace that Plexiglas thing that we had down below. The new wooden one will look very similar to what the town has on the left side, and we want to put one also in the chambers in the visitor's center. In talking to them about that, one of our people were told, that really belongs to the town, and so we really need to get the town's permission to put that second display case in that center, and I'm sure the town will have no issues with it. So those are our intentions, to go ahead and purchase it. About four months ago, we talked very briefly about an Eagle Scout Candidates Project for collecting the colors and being able to dispose of them properly. We had recommended, and we continue to recommend, that the town support this, and the locations for these waterproof boxes this lad is going to produce be placed down on the green, down below, at the police department and at the community center. And so we would like you all to approve that because we will be telling this young lad that he can put them in that location, but it really belongs to the town. Do you all have any issues with that, those locations?
I think it would be appropriate for the young man who's working on his eagle to come to the board with his plan and designation of locations and present that to us for approval.
Very good. I will pass that on to him, sir. Thank you.
Are there any concerns about the locations? Anybody have anything, feedback on that? Okay. Thank you.
My feedback would be on the green. I'd say let's make sure it's appropriately placed, like the green is very pretty, and let's, wouldn't want it detract from the...
Correct.
Whatever, public portion of the green.
Totally concur. We're completing a trifle for local businesses to tell them why it's important for them to hire veterans. And we continue in an advisory capacity for the town in matters of interest to veterans. Now, in addition, I had a chat with the mayor a few weeks ago, and he said that the advisory committees, as I understand, the advisory committees are being reviewed by town council and will be providing guidance to some of them about some of the things they would like to see. And if there's any changes or guidance that you would like us to make, we're certainly very happy to do so, eager to do so.
And we'll be sending out a letter to all the advisory committees to ask you to review your bylaws and see if there's changes you would like to provide that feedback to.
And we're in the midst of reviewing our bylaws right now. But thank you, sir.
Good.
The other was, I thought it was a good suggestion. When we bring a new person on board in VAC, the person comes to visit the meeting and we meet him. If he's interested, we'll give him the town application form that is available. He'll fill it out and send it in, and we'll review it, and then the next meeting, we'll meet with him again and then vote on him. And then we have sent those in to the board as we've got this guy on board as like a consent item. The mayor's suggestion might be a good idea, since this is a, these are people going on an advisory committee, that once we go through our selection, we say, yeah, this guy is good, or this lady is good, that we arrange to meet or have the chair bring that individual to your meeting before you do the open meeting, which I think you do it in Jordan, and arrange for five minutes for you all to listen to the person, and if you have any questions, you've got the opportunity to do so before we approve it. I personally think it's a good idea, and it's my intentions to, as we get new candidates coming in the next few months, to follow that procedure, as the mayor suggested.
And just some background on that, we did have two individuals to come up for a committee. I think everybody pretty much knew one of the individuals. No one knew the second individual, so it was, with a town of thirty-two thousand people, it's hard to know everybody.
Sure.
And certainly, as a council, we would want to make sure that we have at least met the individual and have talked to them and ensured that they're headed in the correct direction as far as serving the town.
Very good. Any questions?
Any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, items A through G, two. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now we'll go into unfinished business. Item 10A, consider commercial activities associated with park rentals. Corey King is here to discuss that with us.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, Town Board. We spoke in February about commercial activity taking place in public parks. In this case, commercial activity being private organizations delivering services, programs in the parks. At that time, staff was asked to confirm the existing language in the ordinance and confirm if it did prohibit this type of activity taking place in the parks. Working with the town attorney, we did in fact confirm that the wording did not prohibit certainly this activity, and subsequently not authorizing staff to remove anybody delivering the activities in the parks. As part of this research, staff also polled local recreation departments just to get another ideas about different ways that departments approach commercial activities taking place in parks. And what we found, that in each case, drop-in use was not allowed to continue. The, again, the, just simply coming to the park and delivering these activities was not viewed by the municipality as an acceptable use of park space and the time. So looking at all of the information, staff did see two possible approaches emerge as ways to address commercial activities taking place in parks. In the first approach, only department programs will be allowed to be delivered in public parks. Essentially, what we are seeing, we would reword the ordinance and prohibit these types of activities to take place. One thing that, well, this was the most common approach by the departments that we polled. It just simply was not allowed. But what the concession was, they approached the organizations and gave them the option to become a town program. Essentially, the town absorbed the program and delivered it, just as they would any other program, yoga, exercise class. It was all the information, revenue, everything was taken in by the department. The instructors became contractors, and they were paid through the department. And now, in this approach, again, the department assumes all the risk and liability associated with it, as they would with all the other department programs. A second approach would be to, again, reword the ordinance to make the drop-in use or commercial activity in parks prohibit that type of use, but allowing a permit for essentially creating an opportunity for delivery of the program almost in same line as a park rental. In this case, the department could outline specific programs, and when I say specific, I mean, we would list yoga classes, exercise classes, A, B, C, D, as the only allowable programs that could be permitted to be delivered in the park. The private organizations, they would provide the evidence of insurance and any other requirements that the department would see as necessary. The private organization then would manage all aspects of the program and also assume all the liability associated with the program. So looking at those two approaches, staff does view the second approach as one that, say, would meet the needs of Matthews. I do think what we see is the type of program that, using an example that we have seen in Stumptown Park, there is a demand for that type of program. I do think that staff, well, staff views the fact that there are a number of people registered for this type of program that do not, say, attend any of the department-offered types of programs. So they provide a service that they feel they need and they want. So in staff's opinion, creating this permit option is something that would be a benefit to the citizens. But as you see in the poll, Approach 1, simply not allowing the private organizations to deliver the programs in parks, was the most common approach that municipalities took. It just simply was not allowed. The only option was for the program to become a department program and offered, you know, by the municipality. I also ask, are there any questions so far?
And your recommendation is number two, Approach 2?
It is, again, looking at what we have seen, again, there are a number of people participating in the program. I do feel there is some level of efficiency gain. The program is still gonna, well, could still be offered. In this case, staff investment is minimal, essentially continuing to maintain the park without the administrative efforts necessary to deliver it. And just simply permitting the organization and receiving the revenue that they would have to pay to be in the park.
Mr. Deman?
Hi, Corey. Corey, how many complaints have you or your department received about use of the, of Stumptown Park over the past while?
And I'll apologize, I know you sent me an email with that.
No apologies necessary.
I will need to confirm with LeAnn to get some better numbers. Frequency is relatively low, in my opinion, as far as direct contact with the department to make a complaint about noise.
I am, I have a problem with us regulating the use of a public park for the public. So I'd like to know if this is a huge problem. I'll just tell you, when I drive down this street and I see people exercising in that park, or I see the public playing, we say we want a downtown where people can play, they can walk, they can bike, they can live their life and do that. It is one of the best advertisements, I think, this small town can have, when you see a group of people exercising in that park. And I would like to know, too, you know, what are we trying to gain from this, and where do you draw the line? It's my opinion that the people are not paying to abuse the park. They're using a public space that if they live in Matthews, their tax dollars have paid for that park, so they should be able to use it. But any money that's being charged is being charged for the expertise of that trainer for exercise. So if we try to govern and put a policy in place for everything, what are we going to do when that beautiful bride wants a photographer to take a picture of her by the public display of affection piece of art that's there? What are we going to do when one of our local artists that we love, and I have paintings in my own home by, want to teach someone how to paint a pretty sunset or sunrise from Stumptown Park? And they're paying that artist for her skills in teaching them how to paint, or that photographer's skills and work to take that picture of that bride? So I just, I see that we're taking this to an extreme and maybe squelching some things that we have worked hard to get this town to be where people walk and play and live and do all sorts of life in the public places that I think belongs to the public.
And I'll share, you know, this is a topic that is, you know, it's nationwide right now. It's one of the hot topics in any conference we attend for the past couple of years. This is a topic that a lot of people sit in on. And it really is that debate you just mentioned, right versus privilege. You know, I'm a citizen, I have my right to be in the park. You know what? This is a business. Essentially, this is their business site. You know, is that viewed more as a privilege that they're taking advantage of, of public provided space, not really any investment in the, say, maintenance of it? As a, you know, granted, a citizen, tax dollars go into the maintenance of it, but as a business, it is just sort of viewed as a separate sort of approach to use of a park, and it's been, you know, debated.
I'll just say one more thing. I think we like to say Matthews is different. I know very often when we're talking about things, we're like, well, that's not the Matthews feel, that's not the Matthews look, that's not the Matthews personality, and so I would like for us to say this is one place, unless we have a horrific problem. I think maybe it would be an enforcement problem where if someone's disrupting and causing a huge issue, they're damaging the property, there's a noise issue, a light issue, that's a police enforcement issue. I don't think it's up to us to do this, but let someone else share their opinions.
Mr. Melton?
I agree with Commissioner Deman. It is the public's park. However, I will disagree that it's not a private organization's venue to conduct their business, and that's what this has turned into. The occasional photographer taking a picture of a bride in Stumptown Park on the occasion, someone painting a picture is one thing, but this is a regular occurrence use. It's almost five to six days a week of one, from what I understand, one individual hosting classes in the park. They were there on our way here tonight, rent-free, on a property that we're paying taxes on, that's causing wear and tear. They're using our resources for the private use of a class that you just can't walk up and join in. We just can't, as citizens, I'll get up and walk over there and start participating in the class unless we're paying that for-profit organization a fee. And using our venues that the citizens pay taxes to build and maintain, I think that's wrong in every sense of the word. And we may have to agree to disagree, but I think if you're going to be a for-profit organization that charges a fee to use a public venue that taxpayers have paid for, then you should have to pay some sort of fee to offset the wear and tear on that, on that venue. And right now, if somebody, they're using it rent-free, from what I understand, and if somebody rolled an ankle in the sidewalk, the individual hosting that class would be held harmless, that charge for insurance would be on the town. And I think that's extremely unfair. You've got somebody who's hosting a for-profit business in a free venue. It's a great gig if you can get it, and he's got it, and I think it's being taken advantage of.
Let me just point one thing out from those comments. You cannot decide that certain things are acceptable and certain things are not. What this is talking about are commercial activities, and if you say that an artist sitting in the park is doing a painting, and they're going to sell that, and that's a commercial activity, you cannot turn your head and say, well, that's okay, but this person over here is doing something wrong. This is all-inclusive, any commercial activity. And I think to Commissioner Deman's point, you know, a photographer out there taking pictures is a commercial activity. Doing a yoga class is a commercial activity. Painting a picture in the park with the intent to sell that is a commercial activity. So you can't decide what is and what is not. It isn't, or it isn't. So, or excuse me, it is or it isn't. So just keep that in mind, you know, in thinking about this. We're talking about something that would be across the board for every commercial activity in the park. Mr. Higgins?
Yes, I would suggest a third option, and that's let's do nothing. I've been elected commissioner going on six years. I've not heard one complaint from any citizen regarding anybody using our parks, and for the reasons that have already been articulated, I don't think it's a good idea. We're talking about possibly making an additional $5,000 a year of revenue. That... That bureaucracy is not worth $5,000, the paperwork's not worth it, your time's not worth it, in my opinion. So I would suggest that we leave things as they are unless they do become more problematic and we get a lot of people standing in here saying, hey, I can't use the park because there's somebody in there using it, but, you know, I don't really have a problem with someone using our park for an exercise class. When I drive by, it's eight or 10 people, looks like a good use of our park, so I'm gonna have to agree to disagree.
Mr. Query?
I reckon my question would be, is the person that is using the park, are they doing it on a regular basis and tying it up? Are they asking for permission or just going out there and using it without permission?
Initially, it was contact with the department. It was a rental. They paid for specific hours to be in the park. And then at some point, late summer, early fall, it just became a drop-in. So once, whatever that period was, they paid through, it just became the drop-in. And, you know, of course, followed with our staff, with the group, but again, it no longer was a rental, and it just became a consistent drop-in. And it is roughly three days a week, maybe more, with pretty consistent hours.
Next question is, do you know whether this person is a citizen or not?
I do not.
I, I think we need to take a little harder look at this before we maybe make a decision, because I can see where somebody is using it for three days a week and tying it up, that may be hindering citizens to, and they may not be coming to us. But the other part is, is I really don't think anyone should use the park without getting permission from our park and rec. Just to go out there and use it, I don't think is right, or I think we'd have a problem. So I would ask that we defer this and come back and see if there's some, someplace in between the two that is better suited.
Okay, if you'll hold that motion so others can comment. Mr. Urban?
We're good on the fact, though, the park is closed at dusk.
Dusk.
So any activities, yes, the fact, commercial activities should be ceased and desist, and the police should be enforcing that.
Correct.
Okay. Charlie, Commissioner Melton made an interesting point. Let's say this person and their commercial activity is doing a yoga class. How could they prevent anybody, or could they prevent somebody from walking up along with their, their, what do you call that thing? The rug or?
Matt.
The mat, and rolling it out and sitting alongside and performing yoga, listening to this guy?
Can't.
He would have no authority to run him away. That's, okay.
I, I will take the position, I think I hear the mayor correctly, I do hear Commissioner Higgins and Demin. I don't see why we shouldn't just be enforcing what we need to be enforcing at the moment and leave the parks as public as they possibly can. I think to Commissioner Query's point, yeah, maybe we study it, but I'm not sure I would defer this. I think we just leave it alone, we go on and continue evaluating it, but I don't think we need to kind of put this on the docket. We can look at it down the road, but I'm sort of in the mindset that, you know, if people want to have activities out there and other people want to join them, we know they can't do anything about it, have at it, maybe we just dissuade that gentleman from doing his activities, knowing that other people can come and enjoy for free. We should advertise that.
We'll go, we'll go.
Here we go, we all go, one night for yoga. But anyway, thank you.
Cory?
That'd be a good site.
Mr. Urban hit on one of the things I was gonna ask about, people being able to join the yoga class and they can't be asked to leave because it is a park open to the public. What do we do if someone wants to rent the park, the whole park, and would like for it only to be certain people? They can do that, correct?
They can. They can rent the park and have a park use permit and have use of it, say, exclusive use. They're in four-hour increments, so it would be four, four-hour period.
Okay. So an individual who's out there doing something from a commercial basis is in a position where anyone from the public could walk up, throw down their yoga mat, and begin to exercise with the class.
That is something that's run through our mind, yes. They, we could not, or they could not ask someone to leave the park in this current condition.
Okay. And then kind of the in-between those two, at what point would we look at use, say, for yoga classes, and the class became so big that there were people unable to use the park as they had wanted to? Some kids wanted to play football or something, or throw baseball, and they want to come out there, but there's such a large yoga class, they can't?
Yes, and at the point of impact to the park as being available to the public, the department will have to have an opinion about it and weigh in on it.
So, you know, the reason I'm asking this is I'm trying to go back to what we talked about last time, and I want to make sure I'm clear on this. I thought what I heard last time is that you couldn't ask them to leave or ask them to fill out a permit. Is that correct, or do you have the authority to go to them and saying you're using so much of this park at the inconvenience of the citizens that you're going to have to reserve it and pay a fee to use it?
At this point, the wording in the ordinance does not prohibit the activity going on. So I do not have the authority to ask them to leave.
Okay, so that goes back to what I think I was trying to drive at last time. To me, it's not the exclusion of, but it's you having the authority to go talk to a group that has clear impact upon the citizens. The citizens' use of the park because of the size of what they're doing. I would agree with being able to change some wording so that you could go to them and say, you can't continue to do this unless you get a permit. And it sounded like you, you can't do that at this point.
Correct.
Okay. So to me, that's, I think that was what I was really driving at last time, and would be in agreement that we need to put wording in for that.
Gotcha.
But I think that, you know, seven or eight people, I mean, you start talking about this commercial thing, there's probably people in that park all the time doing commercial things, so to speak.
Yeah, and you're right, maybe it is wording. I do think, I mean, there are specific examples where, example Garner, North Carolina, where there are specific procedures in place, specific classes are outlined as permitted to be delivered, and it's the permit process sort of describing where it is just limited to that, and it's not really addressing the, almost the bird watching and the painting. I'll say in most cases, that's really viewed as a true drop-in type use of the park and not really, not really having the impact, say, of the seven-day-a-week use that we have seen.
I understand. Mr. Query?
Yeah. I'm gonna go back to what we have authority to and what we don't have authority to. I don't think it's right for them to use the park without getting approval each time, because it could be we have leased it or rented it to someone to use it, and they're thinking they have the right without asking, and they show up and file up somebody else's program that they've, they've paid for. So I think that somewhere down the line, they need, whoever it is, needs to come and get approval to have, to use the park that day, so that you're aware who's in the park. This is a, something going on that's not prohibitive, but I can see where people could have other things going on in the park and say, well, it's my use and I can go nude out there if I want to, and that's not what we, what we intend to. It's supposed to be there for all the citizens to use. Sorry, Barbara.
That would become a police issue, Mr. Query.
That would be a police issue.
Well, to what portion of that? But anyhow, I think somewhere we need to have the guidelines set in place to where to use the park, you've got to get approval. And I don't think our fee for use of the park is that great to where if you're using it for something like that and doing it on a regular basis, to me, that's different than a once-in-awhile type thing. If you're using it three or four days a week, that's, that's tying up our park, and we don't know that this citizen's using it, it could be anybody. And we need, we need to know who's in the park and who's using it and for what reason. So I'm gonna go back to it. I think I would like to put this back to Charlie and our park people to come back with something that's a little more finalized. I can see where you're talking about, Mayor, about the commercial thing, it gets to be a close line. But I think there's gotta be a way that we can control what's going on in the parks without just letting people come out there and use it and say, I'm gonna use it three days a week. And that, you don't know that they wouldn't come off, if somebody in the town was in there doing something, they may say, hey, y'all are disturbing us, you need to move. We don't have any idea what they're saying. But if they've got approval, then that gives Cory the chance to explain to them the rules about they can't say, a citizen can't come over there and participate also. And I'll stop at that.
Mr. Melton?
If a nonprofit group, help center, habitat, free medical clinic, et cetera, wanted to set up an event and fundraise in that park, would they have to come before this board to get approval?
They would.
Yet a commercial establishment can go in that park for profit and make money and not have to come before this board?
I think it falls on that disclosure as a fundraiser, say that, you know, in the example you gave, versus what is essentially just dropping in.
So a nonprofit has to get permission, yet a for-profit does not?
It's, it's...
That's yes or no?
May I help you there a little bit? The nonprofit who wants to solicit for contributions and things like that would have to come and get a permit. But just a nonprofit to go into the park and use it for yoga, they wouldn't have to get a permit?
Is that a nonprofit? What about for profit?
I was saying that, well, either one.
For profit?
But remember the use, what's the governmental nexus here? What is you trying to do? Are you trying to stop, what kind of use are you trying to stop? People doing yoga in a park? Is that what you're trying to stop? That's where I have a problem from a constitutional standpoint. What is the governmental interest in stopping commercial versus non-commercial during the same use? If you see what I'm saying. But there's, there's a way to do constitutionally, time, location, time, place, and manner, you can regulate that under the, under the First Amendment, and we could find a way to probably come up with something. I'm just saying that there, it's not as easy to say nonprofit or profit because the use is the same. But we could develop something that may come up with a solution to this. But right off the top of my head, I'm struggling a little bit on how to do that because of the use you're trying to regulate.
I mean, I'll just add, you know, the, the primary, say, motivation by our department really is to make sure that we are aware. We want the information about who's in the park, and in this case, we just simply don't have it. It is just simply dropping in and, you know, using the park.
Mr. Demin?
I guess I'm just still confused as to why it would be any different than, say, my Sunday school class was gonna get together for a picnic at someone's house, but it was such a beautiful day, we all went to the park. It would be the, possibly the same size group, and you wouldn't know that, so why do we need to know that someone's exercising the park? I guess I am just really confused on what we're trying to do and over-regulate. Who can play in a public park? That should be the one place. And I don't care if someone's paying a personal trainer and they're making profit off of it. It doesn't bother me. In February, I specifically asked if the park space had been damaged from all this, and the answer was no. So I don't see that we have a problem. I think we're possibly trying to over-regulate and maybe create some problems, but if we do any changes in the wording, maybe we could say that, and I don't even know if this is possible, but if some drop-in event is taking up a certain percentage of this park space and people can't picnic or whatever, then maybe that's the issue, but I don't think we can get to the reason they're there. My book club being there, Sunday school class, somebody doing yoga, I don't see a difference.
Mr. Higgins?
I just want to comment, all this talk about we have to know who's in the park and for what reason, that sounds like Russia or something. I mean, we just want people to have a park and be able to go to it whenever they want to and not be also over-regulated, so I don't think we need this kind of oversight to know everything, every, all citizens are doing and non-citizens at all times. It's a park in Matthews, North Carolina. Let's let people go there and have a good time, exercise, have a picnic, do whatever they want. And I just, I think we're just asking to build up more bureaucracy and paperwork, and it's, I don't see any real benefit to it at all.
Okay. Mr. Miller, do you have anything to say?
If I'm called on, I would just suggest that we take no action.
Okay, all right. I'm just making sure everyone has...
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Melton?
My point of this is not to regulate, not to know anything about who's using the park and for what purpose. To go back to my original concern, the whole point that I'm trying to make is, I dislike and disapprove of an established, a for-profit company using our public park for a private commercial venue. That's it. I couldn't care less if a Sunday school's having a picnic, if we're playing flag football, if a family's having, you know, time together out in the park, or people are walking laps. A park is a park is a park for public use. My hang-up on all this is a private, for-profit organization using a public park that taxpayers have paid for, nothing else.
But just remember, you can tell all your friends that there's free yoga lessons in the park every night.
And we got a motion on the floor.
We don't, I don't think we need a motion. We can just direct the attorney and staff or the manager to bring this back to us based upon the discussion we've had.
I understood Mr. Miller to say we're just gonna drop it, but I wanted to brought back to us and want some, I'd like to see some research done on exactly what we need to do to make our park used properly for everybody.
Okay. Does that agree with Mr. Higgins?
No. What are we gonna research? What are we doing? What more information do we need? I don't understand what we're delaying for. What further information is required for us to make a decision tonight?
Well, there is one aspect, the question I asked earlier about Cory's authority to have someone leave the park if they're impacting the ability of the other citizens to use the park and they haven't reserved the park. Now that, to me, that's an open question that really...
How would you write that? How prescriptive would you have to be to say that? If you have more than 12 people, if you have more than 40?
We'll have to give that some thought, I haven't...
I can't imagine what you could write to enforce that. It would have to be so incredibly prescriptive that it'd probably be illegal.
It's giving him the authority to regulate them if they're interfering with the use of the park, if they don't have a permit to be there.
And I, and I don't disagree with something that Commissioner Query said, and that's if, if somebody has the park reserved and has paid money to reserve the entire park, then, then a commercial group shouldn't be able to come in there and intrude on their party or whatever. I do agree with that.
Now, ordinance does provide for that. If a permit holder enters the park and it's being occupied, the permit allows them to remove or ask those people to leave, and police could enforce the ordinance and allow them to use the park that they are permitted to use.
But I guess my point is I don't, I think there's a consensus on the board not to do anything, and so I don't know why we want to bring it up again and discuss it again to see if we want to do something later.
And I'll just share, with, with research, I did not find one example where, say, this drop-in use was not regulated. It was either it couldn't happen and it had to be a department program, or, you know, the permit process where there were specific examples that could be allowed in the park.
Mr. Query?
I said I was through, but let me get, get one more thing. I think, I think there's a couple of things that we need to get clear. Number one, I think our park, Cory, manager or park manager or whoever, needs to have the right to say yea or nay to someone coming into the park. Number two, I don't think anybody should use it without getting permission from our park and rec. Because I think that's, that's stepping, you don't know what they're doing, and you don't know what kind of conflict you're gonna cause if they're out there, what, three or four days a week, and, and somebody wants to get out there and she says... And, and somebody wants to get out there and she says, "Y'all gotta be quiet 'cause I'm conducting a class." He needs to have the right to either stop it or control it. And right now, I don't see that he's got that right. And so anybody can go out there and use it and say, "Hey, you can't say anything to me." And that's not right. I mean, there's got to be a, appropriate use of the park. You can have fellow horses out there running horses around. You don't know what, you don't know what it could be if you open it up to where there's no requirements. Now, I really think we need to not, well, we can let it drop for tonight, but I think it need, we need to give instruction to our attorney to see if he can work something that will solve some of these problems. If he comes back and says we can't, then we understand that.
Mr. Query, do you have a motion that would, uh, direct the manager and the attorney to further and get, investigate the issues that we have discussed this evening?
I'd like to make that motion.
Is there a second? I'll second that motion. Is there any discussion?
I'd like to know what the motion is.
To have the, uh, manager and the attorney continue to explore, uh, the, um, park, um... What am I trying to say? Ordinances, uh, based upon the information that we have discussed here this evening. I think, I think there's, there's different opinions about what you should or shouldn't be able to do. I think the park director needs to have the ability to control who's in the park if it's disruptive and causing issues for, uh, the use of that park by others in the community. Okay. Any further discussion? So the motion is to go back and get another rock.
Go back and get another one.
Okay. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion fails, four to three with Commissioner Dement, Commissioner Urban, Commissioner Miller, and Mayor Proten Higdon voting in opposition. Uh, Commissioner Melton, Commissioner Query, and the mayor voting in, uh, not in opposition, whatever the word, affirmative.
Before you move on, let me clarify though, uh, this is stating the obvious. If it becomes a problem, any use in the park, then the staff needs to report back to this board to determine what, if any, regulations are needed. So this doesn't foreclose any possible future ordinance review. It just says that based on the current facts, there's nothing sufficient to generate an amendment to the ordinance.
Thank you.
So we can get our good cards and go out there next week?
You're in some, some bandages and-
Okay. The next item on the agenda is 10B, update on the planning conference to-do list. Mr. Bodge?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. Maureen, if you'd just scroll down to the, um, spreadsheet. I don't know if that's, I'm doing anybody a favor with that or not. I tell you what, just go to the body of the memo, 'cause it's, it's, uh... All right, so, um, this is part of the monthly update to the board. Couple of them deal with Butler High School, five and six there are about, um, civic youth outreach as well as an interim program for high school students in Matthews to sit on advisory boards and understand the process. Possibly coming as, uh, a senior project, which seniors have to do. Maureen has been diligent and been reaching out to Butler High School. I do think we had recent success contacting someone. So this, we don't have any further information at this point, but we may have some good information at the next board meeting. Okay. Maureen's given me a yes on that. Uh, number 11, uh, is, uh, investigate partnering with nonprofits to develop a tree canopy. Uh, that is a part of A that Jay's gonna speak to, uh, here in a few minutes, uh, about that. Uh, number 29, the Pershore-Halsey property. I did reach out to the Parks and Recreation, County Parks and Recreation Director, Lee Jones. He told me that at this time, they do not have a desire to sell, uh, the Pershore-Halsey property. In fact, their efforts are focused on acquiring, uh, land. Number 36 is analyze Crestdale Road. Um, this has been going on for a while, but we got $150,000 from the Senate through Senator Bishop. And then, um, that was a while back, and we have recently got $125,000 approved from the House side for Crestdale. Uh, this, you guys approved the, um, resolution, and the Board of Transportation will have to make final approval. After that is done, we'll have $250,000. The intention will be to get staff. I know that, um, Reverend Whitley was instrumental, or this was very important to him, uh, getting in the room and talking about what in fact should these improvements look like. It is staff's opinion, the road is in good shape. I know Mr. Whitley'd like to see the road, the curve straightened out, but we feel like it's gonna make traffic faster, and it may have a detrimental impact to the community, not making it more community-friendly, so we do wanna have a, a discussion about that. Uh, number 37 is about moving the signal from, on, uh, from Crestdale, the signal at Matthews-Mint Hill Road in Crestdale, moving that signal to Independence Point Parkway. Uh, we, we did, there's money budgeted for this. There's $40,000 budgeted to do, to do this. And talking to CJ, he mentioned to me that if we wanted to wait and not move the signal, uh, that, and wait until Independence Point Parkway is built, at that time, NC DOT would move the signal at no cost, and this would save the town $40,000. So I would recommend we wait. I know we may have different feelings about that. Okay, I was thinking about Commissioner Miller. I know you, you and I have talked about this a couple of times, but, uh, that's the update on this, uh, Mr. Mayor. And then, uh, planning staff's got an update on the tree canopy and, uh, and the... Like, Charlotte's got, uh, Trees Charlotte kinda talking about that concept.
Good.
Happy to answer any questions, if you guys have any questions. Okay.
Okay.
I'm good with saving $40,000.
Okay. Good.
Mr. Cam?
All right. And I apologize, uh, Ryan Lipp was looking forward to giving you all presentations this evening. He's under the weather, so I'm kinda pinch-hitting this evening. Uh, you'll see in the memo that was dated from back in, uh, January that, uh, staff did hold a meeting with a representative of some Trees Charlotte to kinda, uh, discuss the possibility of, of having a similar sister organization created, uh, which would be called maybe Trees Matthews, for lack of a better or more creative name. The indication that was given at that meeting was that Trees Charlotte receives a significant amount of, uh, help from City of Charlotte and their, uh, tree staff, uh, probably some in-kind help with tools and, and, and staff. Uh, I know that back in 2017, I think City of Charlotte, uh, donated, I believe, $250,000 for an endowment to, to raise money. I don't know if they have an ongoing contribution or not. Um, the takeaway from that meeting was that, um, perhaps the town could nominate an ambassador to start to work with Trees Charlotte and learn more about their, uh, organization. And perhaps in the future, that organization could branch out into Matthews, but there would need to be, um, some essentially financial commitment from the town of Matthews as well if we're gonna have a relationship like that bloom. They are a bona fide 501(c)(3) nonprofits. They're receiving, um, contributions from a lot of different, um, individuals, and I don't know if they've got a million-something-odd-dollar budget. I can't recall their budget off the top of my head. Um, a couple of notes on Trees Charlotte. They did plant, uh, I think they're running about 5,000 to 6,000 trees per year, and they're giving away another approximately 5,000 seedlings per year, um, within the city of Charlotte. So that, that's really the update on, uh, Trees Charlotte, is we could probably have an ambassador to work, um, with that organization in the future. Um, if the town does wanna do giveaways of trees, my understanding, Charlie, is that we can't directly give items away to the public. Um, that would be an emolument, is that correct?
That's generally what the law would hold.
Okay.
So, yes, that's generally what the law would hold. That'd be an unconstitutional private emolument.
So I, and I think that's why Trees Charlotte's been successful as a nonprofit in that regard. And do you want me to keep going on tree canopy, or do you wanna-
Yeah, why don't you just jump in there?
Thanks, Maureen. Yeah, I think there was a s... Second memo there. Oh, we can do the map too, in your way. Yeah, uh, prob- probably go back to the first one you had there. Just go back to the memos, fine. This is going back, another item, I know this is from the 2018 Planning Conference, uh, looking at the tree canopy percentage. Uh, you know, the estimate we have, and this is going from Charlotte's 50-by-50 initiative, was to look at establishing tree canopy goals for the town. And we've had some discussions about this. You probably remember Dylan Lackey, who was with our department, started some of this discussion with you. Charlotte uses, uh, uh, there's a, it's a specific type of aerial photography and analysis called LiDAR, and it's flown about every four to five years. The last, uh, imagery was flown in 2016, um, and we came up with about 52 to 3, 53% canopy. Staff's recommendation here, uh, would be to wait for the 2020 or 2021 imagery to be flown, and we can then assess where we, basically where we've gone from 16 to 20. It's really gonna be tough for us in-house to come up with an estimate today. I mean, he's not, if you have anything you wanna add to that?
I do. And Ryan, of course, he's our GIS person, very, oh, thank you. He's our GIS person, very knowledgeable about this, and it says in 2012 there, we had 52.06%. And what Ryan was explaining to me, there was, uh, several layers of aerial photography that was taken, including sat- satellite imagery, that he feels like that number's a pretty good number. And then in 2016, it actually goes up to 53.6%. And he's saying that that was based off of one, as Jay was talking about, LiDAR, and that makes him uncomfortable, that he's not sure how good of a statistic that is. And in 2020, and we, we don't know when 2020, but they're scheduled to fly this again with the same kind of 2012 overlays, or I guess mixing of data, come up with a better number. So we, uh, we would like to wait, you know, I guess probably a year, well, maybe more than that, but wait till we can get some really good numbers, and then we can see some type of trend on which way our key tree pan- canopy is going. I think if we could ma- wave our magic wand, I think in the meantime, doing some kinda Trees Matthews or something like that would be, you know, because we do see the tree canopy getting knocked down. We don't have that much open space. I do think the best opportunity is to get trees into the hands of private property owners so they can plant, basically plant them in their front and backyards, 'cause so much of our property is in subdivisions, in half-acre, third-acre, quarter-acre lots. I think that's gonna be our best avenue to, uh, get our, you know, get to that 50%. I do, that 50-by-50 is 50% by 2050. Uh, that's a, that's a beautiful number, if you like numbers. Ryan did say, in all honesty, he thinks that's gonna be very, very hard for Charlotte to do, just because there's so much development and so lack of open space to do that. So we may not be in that same situation as Charlotte, but, uh, we do think waiting a little bit's gonna be in our best interest to get better data.
Mr. Melton?
Thank you, Mayor. Would it be, Hazen and Jay, would it be too, too heavy of a lift that until 2021 gets here and they do the flyby and they get the new aerials, to take the, the first slide there titled 2016 Matthews Tree Canopy? Would it be too heavy of a lift for our internal folks to maybe even work with the tree and appearance board to modify that map to show us, pick a date this year, January 1st? Here is what this map looks like if the tree can, how the tree canopy is affected by everything we've approved up to January 1st? And then modify this map to show what this map would look like if our small area plans are built out? Uh, I think that was the ask from the, the 2018, 2018 Planning Conference, but I, I think if this board, regardless of who's on it, could see in graphical representation, hey, here's what we've approved the tree canopy to look like, and here's what our small area plan calls it looking like. I, I think those two contrasts would, would open a lot of eyes.
Uh, from my perspective, the tough part of that is, like, let's use, let's use the Hendrix property as an example. I think that's over 200 acres. That, that was purchased 10 years ago. They wanted to do the auto mall. I think that concept probably is essentially dead. So what would go in there? Like, what, you know, it's, it's so much of our property, that one's gonna be redeveloped. We have no idea what they're gonna come back as a plan. And then a lot of our other areas are zoned R20 or R15. They're essentially holding zones, waiting for a proposal to come forward so the board can, like, talk it up, talk it out, see what's in the town's best interest. So it, it, it's, it is a very logical thing to ask. Converting that into action when the board has so much discretion on these large plots makes it much more difficult. I, I know Davidson has more prescriptive, uh, prescriptive, uh, zoning, and they can probably give you a better handle on, you know, what, what they see things going, you know, changing, whereas we are in the conditional zoning, uh, whatever mindset.
Right. Well, specifically like the ENT District, the Oak Haven, um, trailer park, the, the multifamily project that's going in there, the multifamily projects and single-family projects up on the north side. How, and, and those are just a few examples. Take a snapshot of several of those projects, and, and I think this map would look vastly different. And, and that's what my ask was.
Yeah. And I think, you know, like the 2016 numbers, it says 53.6%, which actually is going up from 2012, 52.06. I wouldn't bet that's the case. And so, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm not sure where our starting point is, or where's the accurate-
Yeah.
You know, what's the accurate number that we can then go forward with?
The starting point would be the, the huge variable.
It could be.
Yeah.
And then, and then we're kind of embarrassed of, I don't know, giving y'all bad information.
Right. That's, I understand.
Jake, or Mr. Higdon?
I just, real quick, add on to what Commissioner Melton said. Um, we do know, however, some of these large developments, what the tree save area was. Some of the big developments have been made, they saved 18% or 15%. We could plug those numbers in. I think your point is you're gonna see a much more denuded landscape, right?
You're gonna see a lot more yellow than green.
Right. There is a lot of information we do know from the stuff that's been built or what they're supposed to save. I guess that doesn't always, that's not always what's saved, but we know what they're supposed to save. Uh, and some of the ones that have been developed since 2016 is what I'm saying. We could plug those numbers in.
Can we go to the last, um, map? Okay, so, scroll down, 'cause I wanna look at the, okay, the legend down here. The green is greater than 40%. So we need to look at that from the perspective of, if we wanna have 50%, then this green should be greater than 50%. And if you wanna go 40 to 50 with a yellow and then under 40 is red, I think you would find that a lot of these areas, especially with the higher densities, um, probably would be yellow and not green. And I think that, you know, of course, this is the property that just had the trees taken down, and that's, uh, not any, that's gonna be 22% now. So, um, I think it kinda goes back to what Mr. Melton and Mr. Higdon were saying. But I would like to see a map that really focuses on the target that we want for the tree canopy. If we want 50%, then let's show where we have 50% and, uh, and then show what's between 40 and 50 and, um, less than 40.
Okay.
I guess my question is, how do we do that? So do we, are we gonna use just aerial, existing aerial photographs? Because we can't use 2016 and 2012 is seven years ago, that's a long time ago.
Was it fair to start in 2016?
I, I'll have to go back to Ryan. I'm not sure what methodology he used to, to arrive at the 40% or how he-
And, and Ryan did say he wanted to come back and have further discussions with the board. Okay.
Do you still want staff to go back? Do you, do you want us to look back at rezoning approvals for like two years? I mean, we could probably, yeah, if, we could give you an acreage number, like, development over the past two years has yielded 300 acres. It's not a, it's not a heavy- It's not, it's not a heavy lift. I think we could do that relatively quickly, looking at site plan approvals.
If the data says 2016, you, you use 2016 as the starting point for the approvals and move forward to, to that?
Can we do projects over five acres, something like that? I mean, that's going to hit most of the, the large developments. I, I don't...
I think that's fair.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Jake.
All right, thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is new business, and 11A is consider request for exemption to ordinance, 130.02 at Cruz Recreation Center. Mr. King?
Thank you, Mayor. We have a prospective renter at Cruz Recreation Center. They would like, well, they plan to host a wedding reception on June 22nd from 12:00 PM to 11:45 PM, with different times for the actual service or ceremony, or reception, actually, in the, in the building. In this case, as a wedding reception, the renter is requesting exemption from the ordinance to allow them to have champagne onsite as part of a toast, again, as part of the reception ceremony. In this case, the rental would bring in around roughly $700 in revenue for the hours using the space, given the, the other activities in the Cruz Rec Center being none during those times. Staff does not see any opposition to allowing this exemption to the ordinance for the rental.
Mr. Melton?
Corey, two, one, maybe two things. Didn't we, the last time we met, we denied a bridal shower from having mimosas?
Correct. In, in that case, staff's opposition to it was the other activities going on in the building at the time. It was a number of youth activities in the gymnasium, the rental was in the multipurpose room directly adjacent to each other, and in this case, on, on the Saturdays between hours of 6:00 and 10:00, there's nothing going on in the gym.
The, the wedding reception is, the ask is June 22nd?
Correct.
So between now and June 22nd, there is a likelihood that there will be a youth event scheduled in that facility?
Well, on Saturdays, most of the activities cease before 4 o'clock. In all, certainly I can't say that nothing will be added, but likelihood is low.
Mr. Miller?
Thank you. So Corey, I understand that we turned it down on your recommendation last time because of the youth activities adjacent, and it was more daytime hours. Is that accurate? Understanding that this won't have similar conflict, I'll make a motion to approve the exemption of the town ordinance and allow consumption of champagne in Cruz Recreation Center as part of their rental request taking place on the 22nd of June from 12:00 to 11:45 PM.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Mr. Higgins?
Corey, I'm really uncomfortable voting in favor of this, when we just unanimously voted not to allow it at, at our last meeting because of the possible conflict with, with youth, and you're saying you can't guarantee there won't be another conflict with youth. So I can't support this motion because it seems vastly unfair to the person that asked last time to do it. We denied them. Why will we allow this person to do it with no guarantee that youth won't be at this event as well?
Mr. Urban?
Can we look at maybe restructuring the motion that would allow, should an event take place, that would create this dilemma? And then Corey could then, at that point, decide, no, we can't have that champagne toast, be an amenable...
It's fine with me. I can't imagine that the bridal planner's going to go for that, that they're going to wait to the last second to decide to...
Well, but I would think that somebody comes up, is going to come up within a reasonable time period before that event, correct?
Correct. And I don't really have an example of an event that has taken place, say, in the past year. Normally on Saturdays, the activities are early in the day. Aside from something huge where we have planned, say, a year ahead or six months ahead, it is, it is unlikely we will add something here in March.
So can you guarantee us there won't be any youth there in the nighttime hours? Can you not allow another event to be scheduled there?
Schedule-wise, yes, we can block the gymnasium. They will be using the multipurpose room.
I just want to be consistent. If we've, if we unanimously denied someone from having alcohol there, and then the next, next meeting we allow it, it seems really wishy-washy board. There's got to be clear distinction on when we allow it and when we don't.
We can, we can certainly block the use in the gym at that time. And actually, the, I mean, the facility closes, so that wouldn't mean anything except for something that we plan.
Mr. Ben?
So the actual reception, if I read the, the memo right, is actually 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM?
Correct.
Okay, and it's just the setup that's prior to that. So when the actual reception is going on, you have no programs?
Correct.
In the evening?
Nothing going on after 6:00.
That's interesting.
Mr. Urban?
I was still working on building my case, but it's okay. The, the second thing is, let's be a little anal here. In the memo, it says, "Traditional wedding reception champagne toast." In the recommended motion, it says, "Allowing consumption of champagne." Can we, is, I'm assuming we're going to just tie it specifically to the champagne toast, because I think one of the problems with the shower was that it was like...
Parting.
There you go. And this, I think, is part of the, the religious ceremony, the champagne toast, or an extension of that. So I think consumption of champagne is a little bit too broad spectrum in my manner, and sort of go to Commissioner Higgins' point of being a little more prescriptive about why we're doing what we're doing. So whoever made, I can't remember who made the motion, but does that seem like a reasonable...
To leave it at, as a toast only?
It, it, in the, in the, the upper portion in the paragraph, it says, "Would like to participate in traditional wedding reception champagne toast." So I'm assuming that's that one particular activity not imbibing the entire time from 6:00 to whatever it was. And it was in the motion, it was in more general terminology.
Okay, let me keep this straight. Mr. Melton?
I, I, if I'm going to be wrong, I'm going to be consistent and be wrong, but I, I agree with the mayor pro tem. I wouldn't want to have to get on the phone with the bride and, that we denied it to, with the bridal shower, and say, yeah, yeah, technically. I, I just see it as, as us being inconsistent, and I, I'm not going to support the motion. While I, yeah, I think it's a great idea. We just told somebody no, and I think there's two, the likelihood of something happening at the same time, it's, it doesn't pass the, I, I just don't think it's fair for us to unanimously deny one and approve the next one. It just doesn't seem right, so I'm not going to support the motion.
Mr. Higgins?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay.
I'll make one comment if I can.
Yes.
A lot of the weddings I've been to, there's plenty of kids, they're just not allowed to drink, and whoever's serving the champagne knows, it's pretty obvious they don't get it. Commissioner Urban, did you want me to revise it for clarification to a champagne toast only?
Yeah, because I, I was getting down to, to the specifics of it. I mean, I, you know, the, the bridal share, showers all imbibing, there wasn't any cross thing. Staff has come back to us on this one, but I think it needs to be just that champagne toast. I'm not wanting to condone that it's an all-out from 6:00 to 11:00 and continually drinking.
Yeah, I understand that. I also understand the inconsistency arguments, and I agree with you, but it's a wedding. I'm going to make a motion, or a substitute motion, if that's what's appropriate, to approve the exemption of the town ordinance, allowing consumption of a champagne toast in Cruz Recreation Center as part of the rental request for a wedding taking place on the 22nd of June from noon to 11:45 PM.
I'll still second that.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. The substitute motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? I'm not going to support the motion because I just don't think that the Recreation Center is the appropriate place to have alcohol and, and parties and stuff. We did have a question about wine being served at a religious ceremony. I can understand that, and, and that's just an ongoing celebration that occurs, and it's only on one significant day of the year for that religion. But I don't want to see this getting started in a recreation center, and it's really that simple, and it's, you let it go once, and then it gets bigger, and it's something else, and it just keeps growing, and, and I'm just not going to support it, so. Okay. Any other comments? All right. Motion's on the floor and seconded. All those in favor? Let the record show that Commissioner Dement, Commissioner Urban, and Commissioner Miller voted affirmative. All those opposed? And the motion fails with Commissioner Query, Commissioner Melton, Mayor Pro Tem Higgins, and the mayor voting in opposition.
I have the original motion.
Okay, so that motion fails. Now we have to go back to the original motion.
Nah.
Yeah, you have to. Okay, so the original motion, it was on the floor. Any discussion on that? Okay. All those in favor of the original motion, raise your hand.
To deny the request is the motion.
No, the original one was not to deny.
Jeff really just edited his initial vote.
All I edited was a toast versus champagne.
Okay, so this is also to...
It's the same thing, that's why I was asking...
But it's still, you're still under the rules.
Since it's a substitute, yeah, yeah. So, so we have the substitute motion. All those in favor of the substitute motion, raise your hand.
The original motion, you've already voted on it.
Excuse me, excuse me. Oh, the original motion, raise your hand.
That's why we have an attorney here.
So nobody's voting in affirmative for the original motion. Okay, all those opposed to the original motion. Motion fails unanimously.
The master is correct.
Okay.
Boy, they...
All right. Next item is consider facade grant application for 455 West John Street. Mr. Cam?